Welcome to the Doordie County Board of Commissioners meeting with your chairman, Christopher S. Cohelis. Your commissioners include, from District One, Commissioner Ed Newsom; from District Two, Commissioner Victor Edwards; from District Three, Commissioner Clinton Johnson; from District Four, Commissioner Russell Gray; from District Five, Commissioner Gloria Gaines; and from District Six, Commissioner Anthony Jones. Also joining us is your county administrator, Michael McCoy; Assistant County Administrator, Scott Addison; County Clerk, Jawan Ware; and County Attorney, Spencer Lee. Thank you for joining your Doordie County Commission meeting.
All right. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Go ahead and call it over to the Doordie County Commission's special call meeting for June 28th, 2021. Again, with the roll call, I note for the record that all commissioners are present in person. We'll move on to minutes. Consider for action the minutes of the June 7th regular meeting and the June 14th work session. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion is seconded and in discussion. They're being called out for votes, so those who favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to delegations. This is where the commission will hear comments on those items pertaining to Doordie County for which a public hearing has not been held or scheduled. We ask everyone to be brief to the point and considerate of time for others. Mr. Wright, DVA Afram Tech Inc., present to discuss building capacity and provide an update on the SBA PPP program.
We bring you greetings, and we'll get right to it. What we're doing is we're giving you an update. First of all, we brought to attention a matter of clerk that we were not able to get with you last week because we get emails from the Atlanta Federal Reserve Bank and they tell us basically when we need to change. And we were told that there was a new program by the SBA called Target Advanced EIDL. And what it does, it gives the participant, when he or she own and operate a business with less than 10 employees between 2019 and May 31 of 2021, if they live in a poverty zones, a hub zone such as the city of Albany and Doordie County, they're eligible for $15,000. So we were told to stop doing what we're doing, the meetings began working on that. And we will bring that to you in a couple of weeks to tell you. But you can get $15,000 if you operate a business at the onset of pandemic and you're still in business now, $15,000. But it's very complex in how you have to do it because it requires three years of operating data on a monthly basis. So we are charged with doing that. Today, we will bring you an update on where we are with the PPP. As you know, the PPP has ended. And Afram Tech and Conceitco, we assisted 2,500 small businesses, many of whom were not in business. They didn't know it was in business. They lost their job, and they saw an opportunity to make some money. Primarily, 50% of these businesses, the 2,500 that we assisted, altogether, that was 6,900 fall in this category. What they were doing was working for various and sundry companies in southwest Georgia. And they saw an opportunity because as a side, as a side sales job, what they did, they were cutting grass. So you'll find that many of the presentation we made, we've given you $2 million worth of work that we delivered and show you how it works. So when you look at this first slide, what we're bringing to you, so you can understand, is all academic. For example, and looking at the budget, first of all, the city of Albany and Doordie County lost 12,000 people between 2010 and 2019. Yet, the budgets have been increasing precipitously for no justifiable reason. That is, for FY '22, Doordie County budget increased by $3 million for less than 80,000 people. The city of Albany budget increased by $20 million during the same time period for 72,000 people. Now, something that's fundamentally wrong economically, and either way you look at it. So what we have here presenting to you, this is a survey by Dr. Daniel Mackenhouse from the Wall Street Journal. He did a survey on the 25 fastest shrinking cities in America. We were number five in the nation, and that is if we accept the fight that the benchmark was if your population was between 50,000 and less than 100,000 when this survey was done. And you lose, we were losing 1,000 citizens every year. So that tells us that all the big wheels that were in power, both governmental-wise and in public life and in private life, were not doing what they needed to do. They were clueless. And that goes because the SBA did a metric. What SBA tells us is that 80% of businesses failed in the first five years, 50% failed in the first six months because of being clueless. 50% do not have any idea of what they need to do or what they're doing, how they got there. Well, that's the same in government. If we look at the Doordie County Commission, the city of Albany and the Doordie County schools, how in the world can you justify dropping down to 72,000 people and still spend a billion dollars? How can you justify it when nobody has had any training in GATB? How can you enforce something you've never been trained on nor do understand? It is clueless. Now, I think it was Jessica Simpson who was in that movie. It may be Taylor Swift. I don't remember which one it was, but I know it was clueless. But that's where we are. And that's what this Wall Street Journal report shows. When you look at it, we were in competition with cities like Jackson, Mississippi, and the largest one was Freeport, Louisiana. They lost almost 12,000, and we lose, by the way, 85% of the county's population live in the city. So when you add up the 5,000 souls that we lost in the city, then you have to be able to adjust mathematically that 85% of the same happened in the county. So we lost between 10,000 and 12,000 people, every year losing 1,000 people. People did not want for you to be going on witch hunts. People did not want trails and trails going nowhere. People did not want to play pickleball or softball or golf ball. What they wanted was a higher quality of life, to be able to find a job and a good transportation system. When you look at us, and you look at all of the cities in Georgia and all over the country, you know there are 80,000 local governments in the United States, 80,000. And before the 1965 Voting Rights Act was passed, Congress gave America a whole year to get in step so they'd be ready. They did not start enforcing the law until 1966. The city of Albany and Doordie County school system and Doordie County Commission fought the law for nearly 12 years, not wanting compliance. We did not get the first black electrician until 1978, 1978. So this clueless, if you look at the data, when you look at how we lost the 12,000 people, well, it was because of those things that were just cited. You can look at the data, you knew what you were doing, and just like the city of Albany and the population in Doordie County, and what about the school system? For FY '22, the school system budget is $300 million for 13,000 students. Now, are we crazy? Are we lying or something is just wrong? No way in the world you can justify, you need $300 million for 13,000 students. The same thing is applicable when you look at local government. You cannot need $300 million in the city of Albany for 72,000 people. And we are still losing 500 to 1,000 a day. Now, Dr. Daniel Mackenhouse, he did another report. We'll bring that to you probably in, on July 12, I think is the date, because that's when we bring you an update on the target. But that's what this is all about when we look at it. No training at GATB of the county to do any of the things that you're trying to enforce.
Mr. Wright.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I heard what you said just a minute ago about how much we're spending for, given our population. Can you give me some comparative data, per capita data, on how much other governments spend compared to us per capita, so that we can actually compare apples to oranges and see whether or not we are indeed out of line?
Yes, ma'am. I can do that because I've already looked at Valdosta and Columbus and others.
What is the per capita expenditure? What is our per capita expenditure compared to others? And if you can, if you can kind of help me to understand that.
I will bring, I'll bring that back.
Thank you.
Because that's what I did. I looked at all of the, and it's in this report anyway that I'm giving you today. It's already in there. I cited Valdosta, Macon, all that's in there. And, and some things, I'm just an expert. I mean, I've been doing it for 40 years. So I know a little bit about, and I may not know as much as I need to know, but I did not get to the Atlanta Federal Reserve Bank because I did not know it. You know, I'm an African American, worked for the Atlanta Federal Reserve Bank. But anyway, I'll bring, I'll bring that back.
Yeah, I'd like to see that because just to say that we're spending too much for our population, you've got to have some basis for comparison there.
Right.
There's got to be a similar population with similar economic bases and that sort of stuff before you can legitimately make that allegation.
Right. Well, I looked at Val, the Lyons County, and their, their county budget's only half a dollar, for example, only half. But now, you understand, they got a lot more population, they got, they have a whole base of, they have a base there too. And when you have all of that, you expect to have a little more. But one reason why our per capita cost is so high is because, one, cluelessness. And when you think about that, when you don't know what to do or how to do it, and you're just in a position because you've got there, then...
Well, just help us to understand just, just how far out of line we are, okay?
Okay.
Thanks.
And then when we come over and look at the, the 2,000, 2,500 small business, you have to, when you look at this, this report by the Wall Street Journal was really a report card on us as a community. All of the things, it's just like a couple of weeks ago, the EDC came here and said, we're going to do blase, we are going to do. They know, could tell they had delivered. Well, that's what all of them come in here and say, we are going to blase, blase, blase. I mean, you haven't really heard anything, but how many jobs delivered? We'll bring you 2,500 jobs. So can we go to the next slide? And then I'll bring that over there. Can we go to the next file? And when we look at this, you will see how we assisted 2,500 and who they are. So see, the EDC came here and said, we did, we're going to do blase, blase if you give us another $100,000. Now, when they fail, you still give them another $100,000 when they ask for it. That's, that's how you blow money. That's why our cost's so high because we don't have any metric to assess that should be penalized when you fail. Just like we were paying all that money out there talking about creating jobs, we used the $100 million we got from MEAT to pay the little airplane company out there, $100,000 every time they supposed to have met a metric for some jobs, and now you don't hear anything from them. 25% of what you're spending in government and in most organizations is waste. So on this next one, what we're looking at, we're giving you an update here. This is on what we did with Conceitco. Next slide. One thing we pointed out here is, one, no training at GATB with the way you appoint these committees and things, that is just fundamentally wrong, that's against the law. So we're going to have someone to look at that to see, can you still use any metric other than objective standard to assign, commit it? Because the 1964 Voting Rights Act instills in us, and it is a law, it's not policy, it is a law, we have to be treated equally, and we have to use an objective standard in the application of these laws. So just because you operate a business in China under FASDA, you cannot come here and operate that same business under GATB because the rules are fundamentally, they're 180 degrees different. And if you're not having a train, how are you going to know that? Now, that's what we'll point out here. Next slide. What we'll point out here is, for your consideration, when you look at, you've got all these outliers, $600,000, I'm talking about the county's finance budget restricted to that. Look at what you've increased public work. That's what the $3 million are going, $3 million. Now, all employees need to be given a raise if it's possible or none, but when you paying somebody $300 an hour to come down here to do bookkeeping and $300 an hour to go back, and then you go on a witch hunt on a coroner who the Constitution authorized, well, that's why we end up with clues that are not getting anywhere. That, that's, that's the call to all these, right? We're going on witch hunt for one thing. And then look at the other increase. Look at the court. Increase there. We splitting the $3 million up and everything and not doing anything for the people in light of the fight. And in spite of the fight, we get all these ARP funds, and that should have been disclosed in the budget. We pointed that out to you. GATB requires valuation, allocation, presentation, and disclosure. Commissioner, we've been doing this for 40 years. You have to follow GATB guidelines. Now, you, you don't, you can do whatever you want to do, but there are problems when you fail to be complicit in doing it in the execution, and that's what is happening. So we pointed out, there should have been notification, at least a footnote in the budget about what is measurable, not what can be booked, but what is measurable. In other words, what do we expect in federal grants? It should have been disclosed, valuation, allocation, presentation, and disclosure. That is fundamental GATB. It is fundamental. Don't care what you did in China or New York or New Mexico, if you operated and under FASDA guidelines, you cannot bring the line and go to Walmart and think you can buy a tape and do it. It is not going to work. And that's why we're in such a mess. Now, we'll, we'll point this out for you when you look at the next page. And when we think about it, all these outliers in the budget, there was no betting, the finance committee did not raise it, the modified crew will not follow, and then we end up saying, well, we just blew $3 million. You don't have anything to show for it. But one thing, we, you know, people are not running to get here to get on no trail. They're not running to get here to go to Chia and look at the same market they saw last time they were here. But now, they'll do it differently when it comes to wireless ventures and Valdosta because it is a destination. We are not a destination. You look at our road network, you look at our air travel, you look at our land travel. Only way you get here is you get a traffic ticket or you have family here. It has to be a destination for the things that we've been told were going to work for us to grow. But the first thing we've got to do, we've got to look at the metric and look at this, look very closely at this report card from the Wall Street Journal. And this was Dr. Daniel Mackenhouse from Harvard University. Now, he could have done anything, but something just stood out when he looked and saw these people losing 12,000 people.
Mr. Wright.
He probably not noticed.
Mr. Wright.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there money in our budget this year going to the trail in that $3 million increase?
I, I don't quite understand.
You say, you seem to be saying that what is driving that $3 million increase is the trail, part of it.
No, 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 no. It's the other things that I just mentioned, like public work, the courts, those things are outlined in the, in the reports to you. I point that out because that was a metric that was used by the Wall Street Journal when they looked at it. It is not substantial.
But you're clear that the $3 million does not contain anything related to the trail, right?
No.
Oh, you know?
But, but the trail, it does involve splotting dollars. Splotting is a part of all the subsidiary budgets.
But it's not a part of the $3 million increase, right?
Well, the, the splotting money is low in so many ways that it's difficult. I'll come back with a report to you and show you on that.
Yes, sir.
Because I found $2 million that was just a mess.
Okay, but, but it's just not a part of the $3 million increase.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Okay, okay.
Where are your edifications?
Well, you just threw me off when you asked me that curveball.
I hear you.
You threw me off, Mr. Wright.
Well, you three...
Now, looking for that now.
Mr. Wright, Mr. Wright, you throw us enough, you know, so, you know?
Oh, my goodness.
Okay? No problem, man.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, that curveball, that curveball really got me.
Yes, sir.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to come back two weeks in.
Yes, sir. I got you.
Yes, ma'am. See if there are any questions.
You've got to be ready for the curveball when you're right in the baseball game.
Yeah, man. I would pull a baseball game.
No problem, no problem, Mr. Wright. Thank you.
I can play hockey.
I appreciate the eye that you keep on us, okay?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
That's your duty as a citizen, and I appreciate it.
Okay, see if there are any other, any other questions. That, that curveball put up.
You got to get it with the right.
All right, thank you. Any other delegations that did not previously sign up that wish to be heard at this time?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
To refresh the commission's memory, I was here on March 29th at the first Doordie County Commission and talking about group homes that are moving into the area. I live in the Arabian Springs area, and there was a group home that moved in directly right next to me, and there's two more within walking distance, two of them owned by the same company or operating by the same company. During the last commission meeting, Mr. Cohelis directed a investigation within 60 days to find out different aspects of the thing. And it's now 90 days, and things had relatively quieted down, I thought, except for two weeks after the commission meeting that the fire department showed up and had a fire next door. But going on with that, when I left the meeting last time, I got together with Paul Forky with the zoning commission, and I had an ordinance that says the Albany Doordie County's zoning ordinance, he said that wasn't the correct ordinance, and he was going to send me the information of the correct ordinance so I could go by that, and I have not received that information. I contacted my commissioner, Victor Edwards, last Friday because I had an incident next door again. There were 12 vehicles parked in the area at 410 Point Sienna. One was right in front of my yard.
Yes, sir.
On my property line right here, practically blocking, blocking my driveway. Victor says, well, call the police. But technically, having worked with tornado and hurricane relief, that's technically a right of way, unless he blocks the driveway completely. I'm, I'm going to go by this city ordinance since I, I don't have the Doordie County ordinance. It talks about residential impact, and we discussed that, it is a residential impact. I'd just gotten through with my other neighbor having a daycare center next door, but thank God she moved to a church. But now, this group has moved in here, and we haven't had any more escapes from that facility that I know of, but the people that work there, they have complete disregard for my privacy and way of life. When I last talked to Victor at the last commission meeting, I believe he said that they had a state license, but there was going to be an investigation whether they had a occupational tax certificate to operate a business through the county. I don't know. In order to get this license, you have to have a parking plan. Well, as you see, that parking plan, if they have one, that went out the window. They are displaying, they're supposed to display a, their license and fire certification on their door, being able to be seen from the street. I'm going by city ordinance now. There was supposed to be a respondent agent taking care of that facility. There's a sign still in front of that house and one on Cherry Laurel that is advertising for employees. That would be a great thing if I was trying to sell my house and the people that are trying to buy my house, look at this is what you have next door. I says, I've got a group home, behavioral home next door. Let's see. Talk about signage, talk about parking, responsible for maintenance. I submitted pictures before. I have a big ditch in the front there with trash all over the place. And that's about it. Like I say, I'm going by this city ordinance since I don't have county ordinance, and I don't know whether there has anything been done to follow through on that. And what really upset me is on Friday, we're going out there taking pictures, and there was a comment made by somebody working over there, says they could do what they want because they can't do nothing about it.
Mr. McCoy, can you give us an update on this matter that we refer for follow-up on?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any comment on this at this time?
I, I do not.
Is Mr. Forky here?
Mr. Forky is not present, and I wasn't aware that this issue was going to come up this morning, so he was not asked to be present.
Let me ask a couple of questions to the county attorney and refresh my recollection because I do, I remember Mr. Murray coming before us before. He made a very logical, reasonable presentation, was very, all legitimate concerns. I'm looking at the number of cars that are next door. I also understand that code enforcement obviously lost Mr. Carter, and we contract with the city for services at code enforcement, and I understand that there's been a transition And I've heard some frustrations from other citizens, other folks, in terms of how code enforcement has or has not been responding. code enforcement has or has not been responding, um, which leads me to a question that is separate and distinct from the current situation that we have with Mr. Murray, which is, are we actually getting any value from the city currently in the current iteration of services that we're paying for in terms of code enforcement? Because I have to say that I continue to be very frustrated at what we're receiving or not receiving. But, um, Mr. Lee, can you provide me a recap, just to refresh my recollection, um, as to how it is possible legally for this group home to be in a completely residential area? Can, can you help me with that?
Um, first off, uh, in the cases that I'm handling with GAY, uh, code enforcement's working well with me. The second part of that is they've had a, certainly a change in personnel over the head, the head of that, uh, code enforcement department over, over the last six, eight months is about third person that they've had there.
Right.
And this person has to get his feet on the ground, obviously, but, uh, I'm not certain, I, I haven't been involved in this issue.
Yes, sir.
But, uh, I'll, I'll certainly look at this issue and get back with you and answer all of the questions that I can, but I need to get, I need to get the facts of the issue on these cars that we're talking about. I don't know what code enforcement, he is a business dude dealing with this issue.
Does our zoning permit for businesses of this type and character to be in a residential neighborhood?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Does our zoning permit for commercial businesses of this type or character to be in residential neighborhoods? And what my recollection was from the last meeting was that somehow it was permissible. How that is, I have no idea, but...
Well, obviously, you can't do this in a residential area, but if it had been rezoned and the commission rezoned it at one time, then, then it can be done perhaps, but, uh, I'll look at the zoning.
Yes, sir. Mr. Murray, what was it that you were told when you spoke with code enforcement about the issue that I just identified?
Uh, I had not spoke to code enforcement at all.
Okay, had you spoken with Mr. Forky?
Uh, the only thing I gave him is my contact number to, uh, an update of the Doherty County laws, but if they're going by the city of Doherty County, uh, if they don't have a license, they're not allowed to operate and all these other facts that I brought up. Also, Friday, uh, a call was made to the zoning commission, uh, and talked to Todd Kennedy, and I believe what he said, he was gonna try to send somebody out to resolve to see what this issue was, and by four or five o'clock, the traffic had disappeared.
What's the address to this property?
It's on, it's next to...
410 Point Sienna.
410 Point Sienna. Here, here's, here's what I think we need, um, and I can appreciate how frustrated Mr. Murray is. Um, I think we need someone from the county that, like, we don't need to just, like, call code enforcement and say, hey, go check this out. Someone from the county needs to comprehensively understand, like, what are the rules? What are they doing? What are the licenses that they have to have? What, do they have to have a parking plan? Do they not have to have a par-? Like, someone needs to be capable of drilling down at that level from the staff level, it's Mr. Lee, Mr. Forky, Mr. McCoy, or a combination thereof, because...
Mr. Chairman, if you ask me to do that, I'll do that for you, and I'll get that in.
Yes, sir, yes, I, and I appreciate, and please, none of this is a criticism, I just, Mr. Murray is laying out a very reasonable, logical argument, and I gotta say that if I were next door to a group home with this many vehicles and fires and people escaping...
Police Department, yeah, the, the DCPD, uh, uh, chief, uh, verified that have a lot of incidences over there. And like I say, they had to die down, and what they're doing is they're, they're advertising in front of this, there, and they're getting these people there, and they're starting to train people there at that house. That's the only logical, and because Mr. Kennedy said, there shouldn't be any more than four people at that residence.
But quite demonstrably, that's not what's happening.
No.
Unless people are driving multiple vehicles at the same time, which isn't happening. So, uh...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
I could just pick it back on, our zoning, I think when Paul came, it allows, what, four residents, I think that's what they call them, four residents in a home. Chief Johnson came before us because of the last, the, uh, the phone calls that we had. Uh, I remember that one was a fire incident and one, I think the ambulance was called, but I guess when I...
Yeah, ambulance, uh, and then two weeks after the, uh, commission meeting, there was the fire department, and I had a friend of mine who's a fire inspector, he said there was a kitchen fire.
Yeah.
And the neighbors had said that there were people in there that had, they had, they found wandering away from that facility.
Yeah, but presently, I think our zoning did allow where, because like you referred to the other homes, that, uh, I guess, Mr. Chairman, what I would like to see done is get back, like you said earlier with Mr. Forky, but then look at and review our zoning where if it can be some modifications where, because now those, those three group homes now, I guess I would use the term grandfathered in, but let's kind of reestablish that, maybe they look at parking in the back. That's, that's, and, and overall, because I think that, that, the, uh, what we adopted were early this year, we adopted a, a group home policy.
We did, I don't remember.
Yeah, and it allowed four residents in a home, but then, you're right, they had a state license, and Mr. Forky was gonna check to see if they had a city license.
What I, what I'm concerned about, and I don't know if this is the case or not, let's say that ostensibly they're actually, like, they can have the business and it's legal to have the business and you can have, it's okay to operate it, but you have to stay within certain parameters. What has been my traditional observation is folks will figure out pretty quickly whether or not they're being watched or they're not being watched, and if it's a for-profit model, which it is, I gotta think more people equals more money. Uh, and so then, how do you police a business model? Uh, and I think sometimes our zoning is a bit, or our rules or regs, whatever, that they tend to be a little bit aspirational, uh, and that you think that folks are gonna do right, and I'm not saying these folks aren't doing right, but certainly, uh, a good case that's been laid out here by Mr. Murray, they haven't had an opportunity to respond, um, but certainly seems like a pretty good case, and so what, what I'm frustrated with is, or I'm curious about, is a better way of saying it, are they just cramming a whole bunch of folks in there in order to run up profits, um, at the expense of the homeowner's value surrounding them? Because I gotta tell you, um, that's got a detrimental, huge detrimental impact on the properties surrounding a group home, and, and I, I get that.
And that, that, that sign doesn't help in front either, and they got one on Cherry Laurel, they got one in the next door to my house, I'd like to see that removed. But what I think is they're running a training facility. They'll hire these employees, they'll take the house, and they'll have all these caregivers come over there and run a training facility, because I've only seen possibly two people that are in that house that are being taken care of, that I can see and that can hear in the backyard, that are mentally challenged.
And, and I wanna just commend you for continuing to come before us, and you know, like, like I told you on Friday, uh, you know, I welcome your phone calls, and I know that, uh, we'll do, be a little bit more aggressive...
Yeah.
...to get with Mr. Paul.
As, as you know, they knocked over the ladies mailbox across the street, and they had drag racing strips on there for people that were associated, that, that, like I said, that's common.
And, and I think, and, and I appreciate it again, this time, I think that we'll be more aggressive, get with Mr. Paul, Mr. McCoy, and, uh, the attorney to really go ahead on and expedite and come up with some kind of solution to give you some relief.
How do I get ahold of the county ordinance? Because Paul was supposed to give that to me. Is that the same?
Well, I think, I think right now with the directives, with the directives of the chairman, um, I mean, you still have an opportunity to reach out to Mr. Forky, but with the directive of the chairman now with, uh, the county administrator, uh, you'll see some results.
Mr. 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 Lee can get you a copy of the applicable ordinances as well.
The Albany-Doherty County zoning ordinance, this one here does not apply, I guess.
Would you say we need...
I think that's the City of Albany zoning ordinance.
It is, which probably is similar.
Our full county ordinances are on our, uh, Doherty County Facebook, or website.
This is all I found.
Yeah.
But I brought this last time.
And, and there are less restrictive zoning requirements in the unincorporated county than in the city, generally speaking.
I know this, this house has had to have a sprinkling system, but when, when, when I talk to the neighbors at Cherry Laurel, I don't think they have a sprinkling system in there. That's another fire issue.
I wonder if the fi- I wonder if the fire chief would know something.
Well, I mean, that, that brings up, uh, uh, you know, we talked about residential, uh, home values have not recovered in Albany and Doherty County, uh, to the degree that other communities of similar size have since the housing bubble burst. Obviously...
Because of the tornado and the hurricane, empty homes.
Right, we've, we've, we've had a, a lot of different things going on.
This one kind of snuck in, I, we were trying to get information, we found out it was owned by a lawyer who sub, who subleased it to a, a company that operates a group home, group behavioral home, yeah.
But what we're faced with here, and, and I looked up, this, uh, this house is owned by Hill Oxford Two LLC, uh, out of Chicago, Illinois. They own three properties, Cherry Laurel, uh, and another one on 10th Avenue, 912 10th Avenue. Um, I guess my point is, you know, when as a community are we going to draw a line in the sand with code enforcement? I'm not arguing the fact that group homes are a, a needed resource within a community, but not right smack dab in the middle of our most solid, stable, uh, tax generating resource in our county, and that's our residential neighborhoods. Quality of life in our community is based on neighborhoods, period. Everything is built around neighborhoods and the sense of community that they bring, whether you're out in the country, in Doherty County, or whether you're in the city limits of Albany. And that sense of community is being disrupted by absentee, call them, uh, disruptors that are coming in with no regard for our citizens, the, the impact to the valuations nor quality of life within our neighborhoods. And I do look at code enforcement as a major missing link in this, and just coordination or eyes between planning and zoning, fire department, uh, the city business license department, uh, and our zoning ordinances, all tied together to have the best interests of our community at heart. What's best for the people who live here, and, you know, how can we police this better, right? Because you don't deserve to pay for a mortgage on your house, um, and hope that that's gonna be an asset you can rely on later in life, only to have someone else with their business interest totally erode the value of, of your investment of a home. And it's not fair to the neighbors, and it creates, uh, a breakup of the sense of community there. It's hard to have a block party, uh, when you've got neighbors like that who may not want to participate. And I really think that Albany and Doherty County should put their foot down about anyone running a business who doesn't want to be a good corporate partner, not only to their neighbors, but to the community which, which they li- they live. The trash, the, the blight, uh, that exists on their property, and just people acting right, uh, is, is a big part of improving, uh, our entire community. So, I'm gonna get off my soapbox there for a minute, but I do think we really need to take a deeper look at how we can be more proactive on this and have all of our departments align toward what our goals are, and that's to stabilize and protect the valuation of single-family residential neighborhoods, but also, uh, what is a, a declining tax base, uh, here in Doherty County. And, you know, Mr. Wright can tell you, uh, where that tax base is decreasing, um, it's, you know, we're getting some corporate partners coming in, that's great, but we've gotta do it, uh, with our, with our home values, too.
Agreed. Thank you very much, Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Now, uh, I was here 90 days ago, and you all said you were gonna look at this within 60 days, and, uh, who do I need to check with, or should I come back for the next commission meeting?
It should have been followed up on, and I'm, I'm presuming that it has been, but that the people that are appropriate for providing the update are not here. Mr. McCoy, will you please, I want you and Mr. Lee to personally get with Mr. Murray, and, uh, Madam Clark, please make sure that this is on the next, um, work session for discussion for us to receive an update on the progress for this matter. It'll be on the next agenda.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Any other, uh, delegations that did not previously sign up that wish to be heard at this time? Okay, thank you. All right, purchases. Consider for action, the purchase of one 2022 Ford F-350 animal control vehicle with animal transport box and emergency equipment from the Doherty County Police Department for the piggyback from the Gwinnett County contract with Wade Ford out of Smyrna, Georgia, in the amount of $52,073.47. This purchase will replace the wrecked animal truck. Funding is budgeted in T-Slosh Seven. Mr. Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. We recommend approval of this, uh, purchase, uh, will allow us to get a fully equipped, um, chassis with, uh, appropriate bed and emergency lights on it. Um, Gwinnett County already produced the specs, and we'd like to approve this purchase.
Is this a, is this just an end-of-life replacement, or was this vehicle wrecked?
This vehicle was in an accident, and we've been through the process to surplus it, and we've been paid for that, so the overage will be paid out of SLOSH Seven.
Very good. Is there a motion?
Versus an insurance settlement?
Sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Commissioner Wright.
I mean, if it was involved in an accident...
We've been paid by the insurance company. We've received the funding for replacement. We've been salvaged cost, we've gotten that, and the overage for the new vehicle come out of SLOSH Seven.
Gotcha, okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCoy, I'm correct in saying this is up for a motion, correct? This is considered for action?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right. I was a little bit confused by that, too. Took me a second when I had to do a double take, but it's just, we're at actually the special call meeting today, um, so that's what was confusing.
Yeah, we, we're hearing these for the first time, uh, right? And voting on them.
That, that, that's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Special call.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, primarily because of the budget.
Understood.
All right.
Uh, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? There being no call matter for a vote, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action, the resolution providing for the acceptance and execution of the contract for Phase Two Alley Improvements for Public Works from the Lowest Responsive and Responsible Bitter Meeting Specifications Jim Boyd Construction out of Albany, Georgia, in the amount of $1,192,037.90, subject to the execution of the contract by the county administrator. The project will provide grading and paving of five alleys in the unincorporated areas of the county. Four vendors submitted bids, with the highest being $1,975,236.42. Funding is budgeted in T-Slosh. Mr. Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for the second of three phases of alley paving that were in T-Slosh. We bought additionally, we've done the rock alley paving to date, and we recommend approval of this bid.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion?
Yes, one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On that first five, uh, Mr. Scott, have we, uh, cleared up all the discrepancies that, and when I say that, those discrepancies mean, you know, we have like, we've had like the minor problems with, uh, maybe running over the gate, maybe, so I wanna make sure that before we go to this next five, that I don't have, you know, limited phone calls with that first five.
Okay.
Right, the current contract's still, they're doing punch list items now, uh, we're still receiving the...
So you got that punch in this? See, I don't, what I don't want to happen now, I don't wanna go too far down the line and jump on the new five, and I haven't completed that first five. Then the second thing, too, if, if that, if, if I run into any, any more alleys that don't have any houses on it, I want you guys to bring that back, because that alley behind that church, it pretty much, once a week, when a new person see that alley behind that church on Holly, what man you looked at? On Holly, on Holly Drive, right? You know we got that alley behind the church, behind, between the store and the church, right?
Right.
There are no houses on that alley, so I don't, I definitely don't need that to happen anymore.
Did, Mr., did we approve the list of...
We, yeah, but I'm just saying, not, I mean, we've done a great job, I just don't wanna get, jump on the new five.
I thought you asked for that to get paid because it had so many potholes and stuff in it.
Nah, they did, they did that on the, but, 'cause I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have put, anyway, we, we through with that, I just don't want to go with a new, a new five, making sure you guys got to stay on top of board with the punch in this. That's all I'm.
Yes, sir. We have, we have, um, we have items in the contract.
Okay.
Protections for the county before we will release final payment under the first contract, so if there's anything still outstanding, we'll make sure that punch list is done before that contract is settled.
Okay.
So we have, we have protections built into each contract.
That's the key to it right there, yeah. We don't want to get too far down the road, and then we're like, hey.
Right. We'll make sure before.
'Cause I mean, we've done a good job, like, you know, a couple of people, fences and things of that nature, or I think we went back and did some cul-de-sacs over some alleys with the, with the drain pipes, so we did good. I just don't want to jump on and get too far down the line.
Right, we got a year warranty if we do have something that comes up, that shows up later. We do have a year warranty with that contract.
Okay.
That's very good. All right. Thank you very much for that, uh, that discussion. Call the matter for a vote, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the purchase of the executive time keeping software for Darty County from the sole source vendor Tyler Technologies out of Plano, Texas, in the amount of, in the initial amount of ninety-seven thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. Tyler Tech is the current vendor for the county's enterprise resource planning ERP software system. The software will interface with the current platform to perform timekeeping functions. The recurring annual fee is forty-three thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars. Funding is budgeted in SPOSS six. Mr. Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you all know, we've been in the process of migrating to a new, uh, platform for finance, and, uh, human resources is currently underway. Um, this upgrade is needed so that, um, our timekeeping can be brought onto the same platform.
This is for hourly employees?
This will be for, for all employees.
All employees?
Yes.
Okay. And so it standardizes that, and?
It brings us all into the same platform, so all into the same software.
I understand. So it helps mitigate risk.
So we'll have finance, we'll have HR, and this timekeeping is kind of involves both of them, you know, between.
I understand. That's actually a good tool to have to mitigate risk against labor lawsuits.
Question?
Yes, Commissioner Gaines.
Is this forty-three thousand, uh, dollars on top, uh, annual, uh, fee on top of an existing fee, or?
The ninety-seven thousand includes it for the first year, and then annually, and so next year we will include the forty-three thousand in our, um, operating budget. But I'm not sure what, we, we are currently paying for timekeeping software, but it's in a different platform.
Okay, right now, our timekeeping is, we're not too many, but we have a legacy system in E1. We don't have really a timekeeping. Every, like, Public Works has a different time clock, um, jail, police, everybody's on a different schedule. And what they do is they go into, um, E1 every, bi-weekly, and enter the time, and finance receives a spreadsheet out of Excel showing what time it's, so.
So we'll recoup the cost of the disparate independent systems that each department uses, 'cause we'll sunset those, correct? And we'll convert everybody over to this standardized system, right?
Yes, sir.
So we'll recoup the, what we're paying on all these other little systems?
Right.
And?
We won't, right. So, and some of the departments, I know EMS has a really bad problem with their timekeeping, they've been waiting for this. Um, and not only, it's not just for timekeeping, it has a lot of other features. Um, also, there's a scheduler in there for people that are on, like, um, you know, shifts, the different shifts. Um, Sam Allen sent me a copy of what they have to do to schedule their people. It is major, and they do that all manually, whereas in this system, they'll be able to use that. I mean, anybody else that's on the shift, you know, that has three different shifts.
Yeah, the question really was, uh, Ms. Henley, whether or not this is new cost or replacement cost?
So I, I, this is a new cost.
It's a new cost.
Yes, ma'am.
Other costs don't go away.
Well, so what we're, what we, what we have currently is an antiquated system. We're doing timekeeping manually, filling out spreadsheets, uh, manually with a pen, uploading that into a spreadsheet. Um, and everybody's system is different, and so this is a, a automated system that we're recommending to, um, to basically, um, come up to today's standard, and, uh, everything will be done, uh, managed electronically, so this will improve our efficiency. And so because this is a software, all software requir, requires a licensing fee, maintenance fee, so every piece of software that we have, we pay this type of fee annually in order to use, uh, that software.
We can capitalize it, uh, through SPOSS this year, but then it becomes an operational cost of forty-three thousand.
Yes, which we've, which we've historically done with other software that we've purchased in the past.
So to Commissioner Gaines' point, which is well taken, um, the recurring expense in order to maintain the software is an expense that we have paid before with respect to us having different systems. Is that right?
We have to pay, we have to have a license to use that in E1. I mean, it does, it's just, it's not, it's not a timekeeping system like this.
But I, I think her question and mine, too.
The current software require, has a license, uh, expense associated with it.
Right. I think our, our question, though, is are there costs that we're incurring already
They're gonna go away.
Around timekeeping, both, both hard costs.
Away. That's what I'm trying, I think what everybody's trying to ask is, is, is there a cost that we're currently paying under our current system that will be going away now that we're moving to this system?
Right. 'Cause right now, all we're. Sir, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Is there an expense that we're paying for, given how we're currently doing our timekeeping, whatever, that will go away, that we will no longer be paying for now that we're paying for this system? Actually, if, and, and just follow me for a second. That tells me that our prorata cost for purposes of how many people we have utilizing that system is actually more expensive under our old system than the new system that we have that's gonna apply to everyone, if you were to actually analyze that on a prorata basis.
I would say.
So, uh, did, you understand where I was going with?
Sure, I, I, I'm saying the same thing.
Yes, ma'am.
What I'm simply asking is.
Answer that right now.
Okay. All right, understood, but we can get that information.
Yes, and.
For this additional money.
Yes, ma'am.
But I, I mean, I think it's very well needed, just the brief conversation I heard, we still putting, using a pencil, writing stuff in.
I. Understand all the, the comments and concerns, and, um, based on the, the records, and I, even if it is more expensive, I, it, it, it's, as long as it's reasonable and, um, I'm satisfied with, with my questions, I'm, I, but I do understand all of the concerns, uh, and I, not at all, um, laying any of those to the side, that's my own personal observation. Uh, at this time, uh, is there a motion? Consider for action the recommendation from the Superior Court to accept the fiscal year 2022 accountability court funding program subgrant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Agency in the amount of two hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. Commission approved the application in the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting. Is there a motion?
We got someone coming down the way.
I've had questions about those two, because it actually appears that A and B, um, are kind of a combination of the same thing.
This is the, I mean, account. Any discussion? There being none, call the matter for a vote, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action. To approve. Motion and second, any discussion? Call the matter for a vote, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Motion to approve. Okay, motion, uh, motion, second?
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion?
Uh, there's no money associated with this, I take it.
Ms. Griffin? There's no money associated with the professional service agreement?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? There being none, call the matter for a vote, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Consider for action the recommendation from the Finance Committee to deny the coroner's request for additional compensation and fifteen thousand dollars for salary increases. Is there a motion?
No reason to pay it in the first place, and I don't know why we need a, um, any action on our part. This is an administrative, um, matter. It was never, it's never part of his contract. Is it, is it a part of his legislation, or, uh, is there any basis for paying it in the first place?
Yes, so it's that vote, thank you.
I thought we were on E, sorry.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Gaines. Uh, the, the clerk will note that the vote on that was unanimous, seven oh. Uh, next, consider for action the recommendation from the Finance Committee to deny the payment of seventy-five dollars per mort trip for deputy coroners and the coroner. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, sec, second. Motion and second, any discussion? There being none, call the matter for a vote, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
And I present the same case.
Yes, ma'am. Six one will be, uh, noted in the record. Consider for action the resolution authorizing the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Albany for the twenty twenty-one burn justice assistance grant program in the amount of sixteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. The agreement stipulates that the county will receive twenty percent of the total award, eighty-three thousand eight hundred and five dollars. Mr. Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an annual grant that we receive every year. We recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? There being none, call the matter for a vote, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the addition of Juneteenth as a paid holiday. Mr. McCoy.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Commissioner Johnson, uh, raised the question of, uh, observing Juneteenth as a paid holiday, and, uh, we typically, uh, approve the holidays along with the budget, and since the question was raised, we have it as a separate agenda item on this agenda, so we took a look at it historically. Uh, we've had nine holidays. We used to have, um, a tenth, uh, but it was removed, uh, somewhere around two thousand nine or ten, and it was a paid, uh, ho, personal holiday. It was kind of a floating holiday, and so that was, that was taken away, and then we reduced to nine, uh, with the addition of, of Juneteenth, that would take us back to ten. So we've, we've been at ten before, and, uh, we're recommending, uh, approval of, uh, adding Juneteenth as a paid holiday, uh.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Ms. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion?
Yes, sir. I, but it was Commissioner Edwards that brought it to our attention.
I'm sorry.
Just for clarification.
Commissioner Edwards, that's the correction.
Thank you. All right, very good. Uh, no further discussion, call the matter for a vote, those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider for action the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget in the amount of seventy-three million seven hundred nine thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars. Mr. McCoy and Ms. Henley.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we are recommending approval of, uh, the budget. Um, I want to, uh, go back a, a few steps. Uh, the, at the, the last commission meeting, uh, we had a, we were directed to go back to the Finance Committee, and so staff, uh, presented a few additional items since, uh, that meeting, uh, and we presented those to the Finance Committee. Uh, one was for facilities management custodian, uh, in the amount of, uh, thirty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, also, we added a HR pay study for seventy-five thousand dollars, and the EDC requests for an additional, uh, hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, we also included in special services district, uh, fifteen thousand dollars for security for Robert Cross Park, and in the solid waste enterprise fund, this was a carryover for shed replacement in the amount of eighty thousand dollars, and then we added the CDBD, um, GDR, uh, budget of three hundred thousand dollars, and then the drug abuse treatment fund, date fund of fifty thousand dollars. And so also, since that, uh, meeting, the coroner came to the board and asked that the additional cost for the health plan be, uh, considered for his budget, so if you'll take a look in, at your spreadsheet that shows the FY twenty twenty-one, twenty-two proposed budget, and then you see the proposed budget amendment after the Finance Committee, which includes this thirteen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars for the health plan for the coroner, which would, which is gonna take his budget from one eighty-five, which was originally, uh, recommended by the Finance Committee, and you add the thirteen six twenty, his budget will go to one eighty. million, seven hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars, and we're recommending approval.
Question?
Yes?
Mr. McCoy, you, you did say you, the total corner budget, you did, you, you said one eighty-nine, six, twenty, but I'm sure you meant one ninety-eight, six, twenty.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
One, one ninety-eight, six, twenty. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification. Yes, Commissioner Gaines.
Mr. McCoy, would you please do me a favor and let me see the EDC's budget?
Yes, ma'am, we can get that forwarded to you.
Yes, and, and want to see the sources of revenue as well.
Yes, ma'am. Well, we can tell you that now. Historically, it's been the business community through the chamber, the city and the county, each at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And so what's happening now is if you approve this, our contribution will be three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, along with the city contributing three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and the business community, community will go away. So the two funding sources will be the city and the county.
Well, it won't go away, but what the business community contributes will go into a, a separate fund for the EDC. But that's.
Yes, they will continue to try to raise money from the business community, and so that would be an additional funding source.
But their, but their seat representation will diminish.